We have no notice.
So I'm going to be curious to see what the answers.
You want to partner with me?
Yes, sir. I love it.
Yeah, for sure.
Lost one of my pages.
Just saying.
I lost my page.
You're on time. Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrive, I would like to call the Tuesday, June 28th, 2022 Committee of Ahold to Order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we are, one nation, united, sovereign, just as we are. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Will do. Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso?
Present.
Alderman McMenamin?
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly?
Present.
Alderman Donilon?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I would like to accept a motion for approval of the June 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any presentations?
None tonight.
Great. Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee, Mr. Clerk. Could you? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Do I ask him now?
Yep.
Alderman McMenamin, could you please vote through the phone?
He will if you ask if these guys will allow him to vote.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Would you all?
It needs to be a motion to allow.
So moved.
Second.
Thank y'all.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good for you, Joe. The ayes have it. We do have a ordinance that was tabled that has been brought to my attention by the Chief Engineer Doug Brown that CWLP requests that the ordinance 2022-236 be pulled out tonight and added to the debate agenda in order to amend the amount and scope at the next city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Now for the ordinances for consideration.
Ordinances tabled in remaining committee are 2021-337, 2022-157, 2022-163, 2022-256. And the first ordinance will be 2022-236, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $29,500 for engineering services to evaluate carbon capture at Dahlman Unit 4 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for debate?
Second.
Any discussion?
There isn't there? Just very briefly, there is a proposed amendment?
Motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion for debate as amended.
All those in favor?
Second.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is CWLP 2022-261, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE23-06 for a five-year contract with Illinois National Bank, INB, for municipal financing for the purchase of vehicles and equipment in the principal amount not to exceed $2,400,000 with interest payments of $135,501.05 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-262, an ordinance authorizing an extension to a professional services agreement with Karen Jennings for assistant training within the Utilities Accounting Division and authorizing additional funding for said extension for a total amount payable not to exceed $44,925 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-263, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement relay kits for various substations from the GE Grid Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $86,832.58 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-264, an ordinance authorizing amendment number one, additional funding in an amount not to exceed $341,100, authorizing a supplemental appropriation in set amount and authorizing the use of environmental and regulatory initiatives and rebate fund ERIRF in relation to the professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated to provide engineering services and construction observation for proposed relocation or replacement of the CWLP water purification plant's process waste ponds for a total amount payable of $936,262 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, Doug, can you explain this a little bit more and what's different between this and what we passed the other day for emergency passage, didn't we?
So what we had the other day, the last one, was for the construction work for the contractor.
Okay.
This is strictly for the engineering work. We have to modify it. One of the bigger expenses out of it is we're having Hanson help us with onsite, basically personnel to come into the site and actually monitoring some of the activities and tasks of the contractor.
Okay, and then how much, what's that leave us in the ERIRF fund?
Let's see here.
If offhand?
Offhand, it was about 25 million. So then the 17 million out of that, and then this is going to be an additional 341,000 on top of the seven, well, 16 and a half, I'm sorry, was the last ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-265, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with IBID, CRM Environmental Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $440,000 for the purchase of new catalyst modules for the Dahlman Power Stations, Unit 4, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-266, an ordinance approving payment to Troxel and Company in an amount not to exceed $4,200,000 for property insurance policy for 39 City of Springfield properties in a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Yes. Alderman McMenamin would like to speak.
Alderman McMenamin?
What was the motion on that one?
Consent.
Debate. And I'll discuss it next week. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Well, you got to have a second for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2022-267, an ordinance amending Chapter 102 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to urban forestry and tree preservation.
Move for debate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have anyone here from the Urban Forestry Commission to speak on this? No? Okay.
This is, I don't want to get in trouble.
Sorry, I talked without. I was just wondering if someone from the Urban Forestry Commission wanted to just kind of explain some of the background on those ordinance, but we could, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I can have Jan here at the next meeting, city council meeting, but we received a grant in order to do the tree inventory and in order to be compliant with, with the grant, we have to have a tree preservation ordinance in place as well. So we just updated our current ordinance in order to reflect the requirements so that we would be eligible for the reimbursement of the, of the funds.
Thank you. That's, that's.
I don't have a problem moving it to consent then.
Second.
Second for consent?
Is that what she was raising her hand for?
Well, I was, I was kind, I kind of had a question, so that's.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022-268, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 6th Street, 6th Street from St. Joseph's to Adley Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flower Men's Club Peacemaker's fundraiser on July 17, 2022 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
All those, oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2022-269, an ordinance approving the appointment of Summer Griffith as Director of the Lincoln Library.
Move for debate?
Second.
Any discussion? I understand we have nine speakers here to speak. Talk about participation. I would ask that, would you all, if everybody is in favor of Director Summer, could we just have a few people come up to speak if you don't mind, but if all of you want to speak, I don't want to stop you.
I think the consensus is we'd like to keep it short and sweet, but we would all like to speak.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Emily Stone?
We'll try to be brief. My name's Emily Stone. I am a Springfield native. I grew up going to Lincoln Library, and I've actually been employed there since 2016. I started my career as a reference librarian. I was then promoted to manager of the Adult Services Department, manager of the Technical Services Department. I then served as the interim director after the departure of Willow Hearn. And most recently, I accepted the additional role of assistant director. I will be very candid with all of you. I took the assistant director role with trepidation. I initially had concerns about acting director Summer Griffith not having a library degree, which I know some of you also share. Several things have completely changed my mind. First, the organizational structure of the library has changed. The leadership team is a triangle with the director, assistant director, and city historian Kurt Mann, all working closely together. This structure provides checks and balances and makes for more effective use of all of our respective strengths. Secondly, I have a master's in library and information science, and I know for a fact that the qualities that make a good library director are not taught at library school, nor are good librarians necessarily good directors. Many libraries, including some of the best and most innovative in the nation, have non-MOIS directors. Directors who've actually been librarians go to get second degrees in fields like communication and nonprofit management to make them better library directors. Finally, and most importantly, in the months that Summer and I have been working closely together, she has time and again demonstrated humility and a willingness to listen to those of us who have specialized library knowledge. This is a rare trait in a leader. I have seen over the past several months the difference that strong and effective leadership can make. We have a very capable staff, and the library can operate day to day without a director, but we need leadership if we want to continue to evolve and adapt to the changing needs of our community. Summer's leadership has already made this a stronger library. I see a newfound sense of purpose and dedication in my colleagues, and we are accomplishing things now as well as planning for the future, both short and long term. We're building momentum, and I think it would be an incredible disservice to the library staff and to the community not to confirm Summer as the library director. So I would ask that you vote to confirm her. I will now stop speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next person up is Katie Colley.
Hi, my name is Katie Colley. I am a reference librarian at Lincoln Library, and I have been working at the library for four years. I have a master's degree in library science, and I am an ASME union member, and I support Summer, and I think she's the best person to serve as the director of Lincoln Library. The time under the previous director was my first real experience of a toxic workplace. Our concerns and opinions were belittled or completely dismissed. Decisions were being made on policy that we had no knowledge of. When we asked for meetings or training or assistance, we were ignored. There was a complete lack of leadership coming from the top, and personally, I spent a lot of my time in 2021 looking for other jobs, and I know I wasn't the only one. If the job market for librarians wasn't so competitive, I wouldn't be here. But I haven't put in any new applications since January. With Summer in the acting director position, I had confidence that things would begin to improve, and I wanted to stay. In the time that Summer has been acting director, things have begun to dramatically improve. She does what she can to make our ideas happen and alleviate problems where she can. She has put in more effort to support and encourage library staff in the last five months than the previous director did in two and a half years. We have had more staff training sessions, more open communication, and more collaboration between departments than I think we've had in the four years that I've been here. Summer's experience in politics and nonprofits benefits her in the position of director of this library more than an MLS would. As someone with an MLS, I have the skills necessary to do the job of a librarian. Purchase books and maintain collections, answer reference questions and do research, and do what I can to help the public access the information that they need. The director of Lincoln Library does not need to know how to be a librarian. They need to know how to create a strategic plan, how to set goals that will move the library forward. They need to know how to network, how to work with city departments, how to create a budget, how to build relationships in the community, and how to lead a team of hardworking and passionate library staff. Summer has those skills and has demonstrated her ability to lead in the five months that she's been acting director. Libraries truly are community centers. We serve everyone in the community regardless of their race, gender, class, or housing status. We are one of the few places left where anyone can come and receive services. Summer understands this and is passionate about doing the work and serving the Springfield community. She is planning for the future of the library. Removing Summer from her position as director will only set us back right when we have just begun to move forward. This is about doing what's best for the library and for the community of Springfield, and Summer is the best choice to lead Lincoln Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Mann?
Welcome. My name's Kurt Mann. I've been the city historian for probably 12 years. I was officially made city historian just this last six months. I've been the manager of the Sangamon Valley Collection. I've worked at the Lincoln Library for 29 years. Tomorrow is my 29th anniversary. 18 of those years have been spent as a manager. I write this statement to express my support for the appointment of Summer Griffith as the permanent director of this library. I, along with Emily Stone, have been working closely with Summer over the past six months. In that time, I have found that her qualifications and experience combined with our expertise as librarians has made us a good team. I'm proud of the work we've accomplished so far. As part of her duties, Summer has been successful in developing relationships between the library and different organizations and individuals in that community. She has been involved interviewing and hiring for 10 positions in the library, four of which are part of the management team. 10 of these positions amount to about a fourth of our staff, so she's already basically hired a quarter of our staff and not had another director underneath them, above them, I mean, excuse me. Communication between the management and the staff has improved with regular weekly meetings. Summer has spent a great deal of time in 111 meetings with individual employees, listening to their ideas and concerns. Training has also become a priority at these weekly meetings. Summer has also shown herself to be a capable leader, handling issues that arise on a daily basis as well as planning for the library's future. My hope is for this work to continue under her guidance and leadership. And I just also want to thank that it's been several directors that I've worked under, and I'm very much happy to be working with her. I think that she's got some passion, she's got some vision for the library, and I think that she really wants to see us succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Fisher?
Are you going to read all of those?
No, I am the office coordinator, so I found everybody copy of all the letters that were written.
Aye.
I was just going to say, you're a fast reader.
I actually am, but, okay, Mr. Mayor and all the persons, I'm writing this letter regarding the appointment of Summer Griffith as Director of Lincoln Library, the Public Library of Springfield. I started my employment with Lincoln Library in 2007 under the directorship of Nancy Huntley. Since that time, I have worked for Willow Hearn, Rochelle Hartman, and interim directors Kurt Mann and Emily Stone. Each of these individuals brought their own strengths and credentials that have aided in the growth of our library. Nonetheless, the seemingly constant turnover in leadership has taken a toll on our library, its staff, and the public's perception of our library. It's safe to say that when Ms. Griffith stepped up, stepped in as acting director in January of this year, things were in a tumultuous state. The exodus of our former director came as a surprise to substantial number of people, and unfortunately, played out quite publicly. Although Ms. Griffith bears none of the responsibility of what came before her, she's been yoked with the burden of it. I cannot imagine what a weight this must be for her, but despite this, she's spent the last six months successfully moving our library forward with vision and dignity. There's been a lot of discussion about Ms. Griffith's lack of MLS. I too question whether this would be an issue. However, having observed Ms. Griffith in this position with the support of assistant director Emily Stone and city historian Kurt Mann, my reservations have dissipated. Their combined qualifications and abilities have successfully transitioned us through a truly difficult time, and the library has once again begun to thrive. I have confidence in this team, as does an overwhelming amount of the staff. The fact that Ms. Griffith's master's degree is in communications is not a hindrance, but an added skill set that Lincoln Library desperately needed. Under her leadership, formerly overlooked areas of the library are being revitalized. The severely neglected technological needs of our building are being addressed. Community partnerships are at an all-time high. Effective policies and procedures aimed at respectfully managing combative and/or mentally ill patrons have been put in place. Staff training and education have been made a priority, and the benefits of a workplace diversity inclusion are being promoted. Ms. Griffith is also a hometown girl with strong ties to our community. Lincoln Library is not simply a resume-building pit stop for her. She's not only vested in the success and evolution of our library, but is Springfield as a whole. I realize that given the circumstances, it's tempting to view this appointment solely from a political standpoint, but I respectfully ask that you do what's best for our library and staff and vote to appoint Summer Griffith as director of Lincoln Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Raines?
Hi, my name is Hillary Raines, and I am the Community Engagement Manager for Lincoln Library. I began working at the Lincoln Library in 2017, but left for another job in 2020, and I've just recently come back to the library about a month ago. I started off as the Youth Services Manager with my MLS just after Nancy Huntley retired. I worked with Willow Hearn, who became the director shortly afterwards, and he and the management team worked closely together to move the Lincoln Library toward the 21st century. Together, we created a new strategic plan, strategized new directions, and built a motivated team. But sadly, most of those initiatives stalled when he left that position. We anticipated the hiring of the previous director, hoping that she would continue the course that we had set, but in hindsight, few of the initiatives were continued. In fact, little management came out of the director's office, and problems multiplied. Though I wanted to work in a library environment since I was five years old, I couldn't continue in the environment, and I couldn't thrive. So I left the position. Summer Beck Griffith and I met shortly afterward, working as colleagues across nonprofit organizations, and I was immediately struck by her drive, her desire to continue many of the initiatives that we had started that had been left to language, and her dedication to the well-being of Springfield residents of all kinds. When I heard she has been chosen as the acting director, I knew the library was in good hands. I found an opportunity to rejoin the Lincoln Library about a month ago, and I am frankly astounded by the change in the building. Initiatives like technology upgrades, library of things, diversification of programming, mobile library services, they're all fully in motion. The library culture is now a breath of fresh air. As Summer has encouraged open communication, broken down silos, and built a functioning, effective team that is so passionate, even the public will tell you that there's a buzz in the library. If she's led this change in just six months, imagine what she can do in a year, five years, or even longer. As far as Summer's qualifications, I really want to state this plainly and in the strongest possible terms. A master's in library science is entirely irrelevant to the job of a library director. A librarian and a library director have two completely different jobs, and in fact, librarians who move up into a directorship often take more classes in communications and in nonprofit management, which are experiences that Summer already has. In this moment, we don't need someone who knows how to catalog a book. We need someone who knows how to manage a nonprofit governmental agency. Summer is that person, and we as a staff stand behind her. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Kay Janet?
Hello. My name is Kay Janet Barnes, and I am here tonight to encourage the council to confirm Summer Griffith as the director of Lincoln Library. I am a Springfield native, born and raised on the north side, north of Sangamon Avenue, and I fondly remember going to the North Branch. Is anybody old enough to remember the North Branch Library? With the door handle so big that when you were a little kid, that you could barely turn it with one hand? Yeah, that was my library. I remember the awesome displays in the window front, the smell of the building that permeated, the books that carried me off to one adventure and then another. And then unbeknownst to either one of us, I met my current husband there. You worked there. I was a patron. But as I got older, I ran through that library. I walked from north of Sangamon Avenue down to the new public library down on 7th Street, and then back again. Pardon me. But I grew up, and then I myself became a librarian, and my career took me off to Michigan, and then after a 20-year hiatus, I again called Springfield my home. I'm so sorry. And then the biggest thing that I remember was the sinking feeling that all of the branches were closed. And that left so many areas of Springfield without ready access to a library. This is changing under Summer's leadership. In the many outreach events I attend in my professional capacity, the library is also there. I can't tell you how many times I've run into Tenna or Summer, and it's been wonderful. I go, and because of this, I can physically, well, not physically, I can see the outreach that's happening from the library that I never experienced or saw when I was younger. As a matter of fact, I just recently heard wonderful news that there is a pop-up library happening less than a half a block away from the original North Branch Library. And all of this is because of Summer and her team. So from my perspective, under Summer's leadership, I see the library growing and reaching into communities that haven't felt its presence in decades. I encourage you to confirm Summer Griffith as the director of the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline Kianka?
Now, you'll have to bear with me. We don't become librarians because we enjoy public speaking. Members of the committee, my name is Caroline Kianka. I'm a resident of Ward 9, and I'm a week and a half away from my five-year anniversary of working at Lincoln Library, first as a librarian and now as the manager of the reference department. I was hired by Nancy Huntley. I worked under Willow Hearn and Rochelle Hartman, and I now work with Summer Griffith. You can't imagine how low morale was this time last year. Almost everyone I spoke to at the library at the time was burned out and sending out job applications anywhere and everywhere. Some were talking about leaving the profession entirely. Some did leave the profession entirely. We were hemorrhaging good talent, but in the past six months, after overhauling the library's administration and filling some much-needed vacancies, so much has gotten better. Right now, I don't know anyone who is applying for other jobs. The library needed a leader, and now it finally has one in Summer Griffith. There's a new energy, and structures are being built where things were just chaos and confusion before. Workers who have been here for 35 years and workers who have been here for six weeks can all feel it. can all feel it. We finally righted the ship. I understand people's concerns that Summer doesn't have a library degree. If the only thing I knew about Summer was that she didn't have an MLS, I might be concerned too. However, I've now worked with her for nearly two years, and as a degreed librarian myself, I can honestly say it doesn't concern me at all. If anything, her background working in nonprofit administration is more relevant to her daily job duties than an MLS would have been, as other people have also said. It's not unheard of for the head of a library of our size to have a director with an administrative background, working in nonprofit administrative but non-library background. Her Assistant Director Emily Stone is a librarian with an MLS, as is Kurt Mann, the city historian. Others in the administration, myself included, have the degree as well. The reason that makes such a difference is that Summer makes a point of listening to her staff. She has a whole staff of library workers, about half of whom do have an MLS, and none of them have a problem following her leadership. Summer is good at her job, she knows it, and everyone at the library knows it. She has more than proven herself to us. If this decision were only made purely on performance, none of us would need to get up and speak like this, her record would speak for herself. I sincerely believe that voting Summer out of the library would be to the institution's detriment, and I'm not alone in that. Morale is finally recovering after years of toxicity. We're able to do more than just keep our doors open, we're able to run innovative programs. We're in parts of the community where we've never had a foothold before. Things are stable, we're making progress, we're making connections, and we're making news. If Summer is forced out of the position, all of that progress might grind to a halt, morale will plummet again, staff may leave or go back into survival mode. Launching a new candidate surge couldn't yield anyone more qualified for it than she is, and it would be an enormous blow to the library's morale and our forward momentum. As someone with a vested interest in the library's future, I urge you to confirm Summer Beck-Gryffith as the library's director, and I hope that hearing all these voices today will help you make your choice. I also have two letters from other people in my department, which I will very kindly not read, but rest assured, they have similar things to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Pettis?
Is anybody manning the library right now?
The other half the staff. We have to adjust some schedules.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing all of us to speak tonight. My name is Jeff Pettis. I have worked in libraries for 20 years, I have a master's degree in library science, and I'm currently the Associate Director of the Medical Library at SIU School of Medicine. I'm also a member of the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. Perhaps most importantly, I've been a patron and lover of Lincoln Library since I was two years old. It is clear to me now that my experience at Lincoln Library as a youngster planted the seed in my journey to become a librarian. And I say all of this simply to demonstrate and assure to you that I have a deep-rooted passion for libraries. I love libraries, and I love our library. Like many others, I was completely shocked when I heard the news that Rochelle Hartman had been fired as Director of Lincoln Library. As you recall, there was a lot of confusion and conflicting information surrounding the cause and circumstances that led to her dismissal. I do not wish to dwell on the past or how things unfolded, but I will say that I was grateful that the mayor and Corporation Council agreed to meet with the board and discuss the decision, and more importantly, their plan for moving forward. Like some of you, I was initially apprehensive when I heard that a non-librarian was being appointed as acting director. My dedication to librarianship and respect for the profession led me to question the merits of the mayor's decision. However, as a library board member, my primary concern is looking out for the best interest of the library and its patrons. The decision had been made, and the only logical, non-reactionary thing that I could do was let Summer's performance guide my judgment and to see if the library would benefit from her leadership. After six months, I can honestly say I am blown away at the progress that has been made at Lincoln Library. Gaps in staffing have been addressed, security measures have improved, library staff have completed important training programs, new and innovative programming have been rolled out, and there's a clear and comprehensive vision for the future of the library, both short and long term. In board meetings, Summer has been honest, transparent, thorough, and direct. She does not candy coat the challenges faced or shy away from expressing concerns. She likewise does not hesitate to promote the library's services and resources, highlight the library's accomplishments, and praise her staff, giving credit where credit is due. In short, Summer is a fantastic and effective leader. I know you all care deeply about your community. I watch the city council meetings almost every week, and that is abundantly clear. I also know that you value expertise and seek the advice and counsel of people who are experts in their given fields when making decisions. When the city's water smelled bad, you brought in a water expert. When decisions were needed about the equipment needs of the fire department, you understandably sought input from those who understand the needs of our firefighters. I ask you now to apply that same judicial approach to the library. Listen to the thoughts and opinions of the library professionals who are here tonight and take them seriously. Reach out to library staff and ask what they think. Review the library's reports, presentations, and board minutes. Talk to members of the library board. The board has met with Summer once a month, ever since she was appointed as acting director, and we have gained a clear sense of her leadership style and vision. This very horseshoe voted to approve each and every member of the board. We take our position seriously, and I hope that you, in turn, take our opinions seriously. I ask you to take all of this into consideration and make your decision based on Summer's performance. Honestly, I believe we have a winning lottery ticket with Summer. She's a Springfield native who is dedicated to this community, and she's dedicated to this library. She came to this position with a pre-existing relationship with staff, and she has further earned their respect and trust. Summer has demonstrated a sincere commitment to building relationships with organizations, institutions, and people in the community. She has a solid team and a comprehensive vision. She's identified gaps in policies and procedures, implemented changes, fostered improvements in library services. I believe Lincoln Library is in the midst of a renaissance, due in large part to the effort of Summer and her leadership team, and I am immensely concerned that that progress may be lost if she is dismissed. As I mentioned previously, my primary obligations as a board member are to look out for the best interest of the library and its patrons, and to ensure that the library is moving in the right direction. At this critical juncture, I strongly believe that Summer is what is best for the library, and that her vision and path forward will benefit the community and provide Springfield with the library we deserve. The library needs Summer and her leadership team right now, and I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of her appointment.
Thank you. Director Summer, I hope you have the lottery ticket numbers.
Megan Freeman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Megan Freeman. I hold a master's degree in library and information science, and I am currently a library assistant to a union position in the circulation department at Lincoln Library. I am here in support of Summer Beck-Gryffith's appointment as Director. During the fall of last year, I left a librarian position at a wonderful library just outside of the city to come here, to work in my community Ward Five, at my library in this capacity. In our department, we help issue library cards, check out materials, answer questions, help with outreach events, and connect folks with information about where in the library and on occasion where beyond our walls they can go to find the resources they seek. My colleagues and I are often the first people that patrons see as they enter the space. Patrons, and I must punctuate this point with an extremely broad span of stories, backgrounds, abilities, and needs. We are, after all, a public library, and one of our core values, according to the American Library Association's core values of librarianship, is to quote, "provide the highest level of service to all library users," unquote. As you can imagine, the nuances of this and the work itself can be difficult and very taxing. At the library, light is shone on all corners of humanity, leaving us to navigate sometimes very difficult situations and interactions. With that, I believe that the library must have a leader who can help create a space where staff feel safe and supported, where they feel they belong and are heard, where they see action taking place based on their input, and where collaboration in and outside of the library takes place. I have witnessed all of those attributes in Summer during her short tenure as acting director. Noted actions taken under her leadership and that of her leadership team include: a beautification of the first floor near our circulation desk, including the creation of an office for the city's community care coordinator and homeless outreach officer. An embedded social work in a public library such as ours has happened across the country, and I am so very proud that this step has been taken here in our community. Provision of opportunities for staff across departments to collaborate on projects, build their skill sets, and highlight their gifts and interests. I believe such opportunities break down silos and help to build community in our organization. A focus on decision-making through an equity lens. An increase and strong focus in pushing out into the community while also actively promoting the library offerings that take place inside of our walls. As a trained librarian myself, I understand that librarians operate through the lens of specific values and principles, that the training is of great significance, and the profession of tremendous importance. I also believe that, as an employee at this library currently, it would be absolutely detrimental to remove Summer as our director. Libraries are not simply an arm of government or a place with books. They are not pawns to be used in politics. They are made of hard-working people who deserve solid footing and professional respect. They are sacred spaces for exploring ideas, for sharing the tangible and intangible, and there is a lot of work to be done at our library. A lot. But Summer has gotten that ball rolling, so please don't stop that momentum, and please just vote yes to her appointment as Director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank all of you.
Madam Chair, I believe there's one more young lady out there that would like to speak.
Okay. You forgot to press your button.
I know.
Oh, boy.
Hello, my name is Deanna. I reside in Springfield. I'm an employee at Lincoln Library. I'm a library assistant four. I work in extension services. I do a lot of outreach. Since I've been employed with the city, I've experienced four different library directors in the last six and a half years. The library needs stability, strong leadership, and community that supports us. I understand that some may disagree that Summer Griffith shouldn't hold the role as a library director without having an MLS. However, you do need, and you do not need, an MLS to have a strong leadership skills and lead our library in the right direction. It has been proven in all of Summer's work in the last six months. There are so many positive things that have been done under the leadership of Summer, and I would like to share three major accomplishments that have been done that I am very proud of. One is making sure all staff members have the proper training and tools, and we are equipped to handle and de-escalate issues that may arrive at the library, including how to deal with the crisis of the homeless and individuals with mental illness. Standing behind all of her staff and making sure it is a safe environment for all of us to work in, and giving all of her staff at the library opportunities to grow, flourish, and show their creative and artistic talents to the community. I believe in my heart by voting Summer and as a Director, the library... As a library director, the entire community will see that that's the right decision being made. We will continue to thrive as a community. I am a union member of Ask Me Local 3738, and I'm in full support of Summer Griffith becoming the library director.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
You oppose? Alderman Gregory?
I just want to say, you know, before we get to the vote next week, you know, for me, as we're considering this, you know, I've heard a lot of comments about, you know, degrees and things, and, you know, from this seat where we're at in Ward Two, that's never in consideration. What's in consideration for me is the people who work for you, and what they think about you, and things of that nature. So, I just wanted to let you know that from this seat here.
I just want to say thank you to my staff. That's actually kind of, you almost wish someone would say something mean about you. That's a little too much to sit and listen to, to be honest. Makes me feel deeply uncomfortable. I just want to say, I mean, clearly the structure with Assistant Director Emily and myself, and Kurt working together with the phenomenal staff that we have. I know we talked last week, and I just cannot stress enough that a thriving library promotes a thriving Springfield, and as we seek to the future of the changing landscape of small cities, and as people have more mobility and where they can live, and what we can do in quality of life issues, this really is something that can be a benefit to all of your wards, and I just really look forward to continuing to working with y'all and with these guys and with the handful of people we left manning the desk at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone has any questions, yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so, Summer, can you just tell me, first of all, this was very impressive.
I wish I could organize that. I wish I could move them in that same direction all the time.
So, how many people are employed at the library right now?
We have about 40.
Forty, and you have...
So, total, we would have 40, but right now, we have about 37.
Thirty-seven, okay. So, a significant portion of your staff has shown up tonight.
Yes, and there's more letters, I'm told, for folks that had to sit at the desk.
And we're glad that they're there.
Me too.
And I hope you know that, I mean, obviously, I've been public about some of my concerns. And I hope that you understand that none of that was a personal issue.
Yeah.
I've seen you around, we've got a picture of you in the parade.
Yeah.
You know, that was not my concern. So, I certainly, I appreciate everything, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for everything that you've shared with us, and continue to keep an open mind.
Yeah, we look forward to the great things happening. Thank you.
Alderwoman, this is so.
Thank you. Summer, I was also voiced my opinion early on, and you have to understand, we have fatigue too.
Yeah, I know.
You're the fourth, I've been here for five years, and you're the fourth Director...
That's a lot.
...that I've been, you know.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. So, you know, we also have community members and people in our wards that reach out to us, that are librarians, and say, hey, we have a concern with this, or we have a concern with that. So, we have people to answer to as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we do appreciate all of your staff coming here tonight and talking to us. It was very nice to hear, and we'll vote next week.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to close out that I've seen you out in the community since you've been here and since I've been up here, and that's made a big difference to me, for me to see that. So, I've just been watching and being observant and coming over to the library for activities that you don't even know when I'm popping up, so that's a good thing, too. Thank you for doing your job.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-270, an ordinance approving reappointment of Joseph Kayatt to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is he here tonight?
Is he here tonight?
Said he couldn't come. This week, we're next.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-271, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Jody Davis to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board.
For debate.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-272, an ordinance approving the Aldermanic District's pursuit to the 2020 National DCNL Census.
Move for debate.
Second. Any discussion?
Madam.
Alderman Donnelly?
Thank you, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor.
Noted.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-273, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $32,871.66 to Lori Von Baron for the property damage settlement of risk management claim number AL 2022-0430042.
For consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-274, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $25,433.44 to Kanan Rennenberger as city of Springfield firefighter for the settlement of workman's compensation claim for case number 17-WC-035048 and 19-WC-009115.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-275, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Andrews Engineering Incorporated for the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, Illinois's EPA Site Remediation Program for the former Honeywell Hobbs Corporation site at 1034 East Ast Street, for in an amount not to exceed $380,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for debate.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Chief, I have some questions for you. I think if you've got someone with an engineering firm with you, you might want to bring them up, too.
What's that?
Is there someone with you? We've been waiting for a while to get more information on, on the background of this, this site. I, I'm assuming based on this dollar amount that we have, you have an identification of the contaminants that are there, we have a, a plan in place, and so we have a better understanding. Could we, could we get some of that detail of what's going on with the site?
We sure can, and I'll let Steve do that.
And that was exactly why I suggested that. Thank you, Chief.
Exactly the question you want addressed? What's your question that you want to address?
I'd like to know what's going on with the site. What did you find there? What steps are you, are we looking at taking? How long is the plan for this?
Okay, so to take you back, that Hobbs, Honeywell Hobbs had a no further remediation letter issued to them back in, I think, two thousand and five or something like that. But it, but it has a stipulation that the property has to stay as an industrial commercial property.
Right.
When we put a fire station on it, it has to be, that NFR letter has to be flipped over to a residential. Also, back then, the indoor inhalation regulations weren't in the Illinois EPA regs, so they didn't have to deal with indoor. So that has to be reevaluated. So we went out and looked at three locations that had the highest concentrations when they, when they got their NFR.
And I'm sorry, can I just ask, first of all?
Yep.
Can you give your name and who you're with?
Oh, sorry. I'm Steve Gobelin with Andrews Engineering.
I just asked clerk.
And then, and then also, when you're talking about the contaminant concern, can you please, I'd, I'd like to know what exactly we're talking about?
The contaminant concerns are trichlorethylene, cis one-two diclorethylene, and vinyl chloride are the main three.
Okay, and those have all been detected as present?
Yeah, they're, they're currently detected in the groundwater, in the area that's fenced in, that had an engineered barrier placed upon it for the outdoor inhalation protection, which is now going to be part of the parking lot area.
Okay. So, no, I, no, I-
Like, go on, what do you want?
Actually, I used to work at the Push Control Board. I have a level of familiarity with these rules, okay? So what kind of timelines are you looking at here? Is this, how realistic is this cost? What, what kind of expectations do you have?
The cost is, I was asked to put together a worst-case scenario cost. So part of that cost is also rolling in all the Illinois EPA's cost that they'll be, because when we submit something to EPA, they review the plan, and their hourly rates are then applied, and, and the responsible party, which would be the city, would have to pay for their employees' cost in review. So I, I had discussions with Illinois EPA trying to figure out what type of cost that would be, and, and, and because the, of the urgency of getting this thing built in twenty twenty-three, that we would expedite the review of the initial report to them. And so that's additional fees associated with it. But it, it also, this budget also includes the, the cost for the geotechnical investig- geotechnical investigation that would be required for the building. You know, so.
So that's the investigation work. If we have to do any sort of soil removal or any sort of materials, I mean, any, any other additional remediation steps, is that included?
I don't think, the budget didn't include any physical remediation, because I don't believe it exists. Most of the contamination is, is in groundwater, and it's somewhat stagnant to the southern, southwestern side of the property.
Okay.
The area where the footprint of the building is at was actually, in the original Hobbs investigation, had no detection of volatile organics. So, and now, and then, and the footprint is set up so that the, the living waters is even further away from the area of concern. So in essence, what we have to do is that we have to, when we reopen up the investigation to get EPA to flip it over to residential, we have to show, demonstrate to them that, what the current conditions are. So that's why we have to do an, an investigation throughout all the property to confirm that nothing new is out there, everything's as it was before. The issue's always going to be with groundwater. City has an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater, so that alleviates EPA's concern on groundwater. The engineered barrier that was out there for the outdoor inhalation is still going to be a problem. So that will be addressed by the parking lot that will be built there. That, that also, that area that, that was, had the engineered barrier actually exceeds for the indoor inhalation, so there will be a requirement that no building structures are placed upon it without having some sort of building control technologies.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I was, I was gonna say, you know, I, I've seen you guys out there working sometimes in much, much heat, so we thank you guys for your hard work. You know, for, for me and, and just to our council, I think this is, you know, really important to, to expense and, you know, this amount and, and, you know, whatever we need to do, you know, for the community that it's in, the, the community that it's around. I think it needs to stay there, it was close, and, you know, if there was another spot close to this, 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 this community, you know, I would be all for it, but I think this is the best spot. So, you know, I encourage everybody to support this and, so we can put a, put, put a door to this, this number six.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. The only, I guess the big question I have is, and I'm not going to get into the debate of where the best place to go. You say that's the best place to go, that's fine, but what concerns me is, okay, we buy this land, right now EPA says we don't, we don't have to do anything, but that's right now with the groundwater or whatever.
Right.
Five years from now, that can change. We own the ground, we're responsible for. So potentially, do, do we have a risk there? Do, will we have a risk that we will have to do further cleanup and thus causing more, more, and more cost?
No, because Illinois EPA has always had a stance that once an NFR is issued, if, if their regulations become more stringent or, or changed, they don't go back in and reopen that NFR to do something. In fact, that the contaminant load compared now, based upon what it was in oh-six when they got the NFR, was a lot less. There were, there was a lot of other contaminants that exceeded, had exceedances, and those no longer exist. There's only basically vinyl chloride and, and I think cis one-two diclorethylene that's, that's existence still out there that it has an exceedance. But over time, natural attenuation will, will degrade the, the contaminants.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Dissenzo.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So we have to do this site investigation to obtain the NFR from EPA. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have an NFR now. We have to do this.
You have, Honeywell Hobbs, the owner of the property, has an NFR letter. They have the no further remediation, but it must stay as an industrial commercial property.
Correct, because that's what it was.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to ask again, why are we not going back to Honeywell Hobbs to pay this three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and why is the city absorbing that cost? It's a company that's still in business. I'm not asking you, I'm just putting it out there in the universe.
I'm not gonna answer it.
You can't answer it?
No.
Okay. All right. I mean, I think it's a little ridiculous. That's been the whole crux of this Pillsbury issue, is we can't, you know, we haven't gone back to them, or it's been purchased by so many other people over the years, and they took responsibility for it, but we have an opportunity here to go back to this company and say, hey, pay for this, and we're not doing that. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. Not a question for you again.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two seventy-six. An ordinance accepting lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW twenty-three dash zero five dash three four with Hanson Robinson Company for air-cooled water chiller replacement at Municipal Center East in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars, five, two hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two seventy-seven. An ordinance approving the addendum four to the agreement with Springfield-Segmond County Growth Alliance, formerly known as Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, previously authorized by ordinance two-three-seven dash zero-six dash eighteen to provide additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for extending the date of completion of the project with February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three for technical and professional services to assist with the economic growth within the city.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two seventy-eight. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of twenty-three thousand dollars to Abefest Incorporated for Abefest twenty twenty-two to be held July eighth through ninth, twenty twenty-two for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion for a move to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I need the clerk to read it? The amendment?
No.
Okay. All those-
Okay, Alderman, go ahead.
Uh, did we put that on debate? If not, request it to go on debate.
We have a motion for debate.
Do we have a motion for a debate?
On this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right now, we're just amending it first.
Do he understand we're amending it first?
We're amending it first, Alderman.
Okay, that's fine. I couldn't hear, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
So do I, we got a motion on the floor and a second for the amendment, right? All those in favor?
No, I requested to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Could we have Director Dahl? I'd like an explanation of why this is coming out of ARPA funds instead of the, instead of the visitors' fund.
Well, when we passed the FY twenty-three budget and we put the ARPA initiatives in there, there was a line item for local tourism grants. That's how the local tourism grants came back.
Okay, so that's what this is coming from.
That's right. It's coming from that line, and that's the only reason why they came back.
Perfect, and that's, that's for all of the following amendments also?
All, all, not only the following here, but the last two as well, for Juneteenth and for the Capitol City celebration. Those were both all ARPA dollars that were being used.
I just wanted to make sure that's where that was coming from, because I was a little confused. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion for debate as amended.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Joe, do you have any discussion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of ten thousand dollars to Capitol City Baseball LLC, doing business as Springfield Horseshoes, for the twenty twenty-two Springfield Horseshoes baseball season to be held from June first, twenty twenty-two through August sixth, twenty twenty-two for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion.
Move to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
No, I, that was the last one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion for consent as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two eighty. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of twenty thousand dollars to the International Route sixty-six Mother Road Festival Incorporated for the twenty twenty-two Route sixty-six Mother Road Festival to be held September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move to amend.
Second.
Move to, oh, I guess we got, go ahead.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Move to consent as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two eighty-three. An ordinance extending the term of the SHA Madison Park Place Tax Increment Redevelopment Project area with redevelopment plan and project to December fifteenth, twenty thirty-four.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two eighty-four. An ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Helping Hands of Springfield Incorporated for its Park Street Apartments Program to construction, construct housing for families, individuals, and veterans that are homeless utilizing home ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move to debate.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Uh, this is really a, a, a great purpose and a, a great intention here to provide supportive housing for those that are hopefully coming out of homelessness and, and finding a, a better standing in life. My, my concern is with the location here. We have a lack of, uh, street lighting, lack of sidewalks, lack of street. And I would think that the homeless that would be here, uh, were coming out of homelessness that need the supportive help. I, I don't think they'll have vehicles to get around, and I'll go into more detail next week, but I'm, I'm just concerned about, uh, folks being on foot, getting around. The mass transit, uh, the, uh, they call it circle, uh, transfer station is, uh, almost a mile away. You gotta cross, you gotta wait for traffic, uh, across McCarthy to get there. Again, you're going through township roads to get over there, um, that are narrow with weak sidewalks. So my concern is the danger, the workplace, uh, those trying to improve from homelessness in, in a remote location like this. Uh, Park Street there is a dead-end road. So both the concerns I have, I hope Helping Hands will have some answers, but I think to say that they'll provide transportation will be inadequate. When mass transit is so far away, you've got twenty-three, uh, housing units, and some of those might be multiple people in, in the, uh, units that they're married, let's say. Um, you know, during the winter time, when the days are short, the dark hours are long, putting people on the road like that on the street is, um, is a dangerous course of action. This, uh, project is heavily funded with Illinois Housing Development Authority funds. So once we put it in place, it's gonna be there for, for many years. And so we have to be careful about the location, um, and, and putting people into danger, uh, like this. So I'll maybe have more to say about it next week. I'm interested in hearing what, uh, Helping Hands has to say about it. I wish Helping Hands Board had reached out, um, to discuss the project even more seven. Um, when, uh, Erica Smith, um, she reached out in, uh, late December during the holidays and, uh, said she'd like to discuss the site and, uh, I said, um, after the holiday delay, I said, yes, I'd like to meet. And then she left the agency and said that she had passed along my request, uh, wishing to meet with the board, um, to the board. But, uh, then I never heard anything back, so I thought maybe the project, um, dead. Uh, but then it came back to life now, and, um, I, I, uh, I, I have these great concerns. So, uh, thanks for the, this opportunity, opportunity to, uh, express the things.
Thank you, um, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, so my question is more around the funding of this. When we originally, with our whole home ARPA funds, we had discussed that we would, as part of letting the continuum bring their expertise and, and professionalism to help direct the council and, and how we use those funds. My understanding was that at that time, this council agreed that we would hold the home ARPA funds for that continuum work. Um, I did check with, um, Treasurer Boucher. There are enough funds in the, the city's home funds to cover the cost of this project. So, um, I would move that we amend this proposal to change the funding source from the home ARPA just to the regular home funds. So I'd make a motion to amend that.
Second. Any more discussion before I say all those in favor? Alderman Gregory?
I just, I have a question on the difference of the two. So, so I, I, I remember we had two million in home ARPA funds from the regular ARPA. And, and then we have another fund for home.
Right. Then we have our regular home funds that just kind of, and again, I'm not the expert on it. And if we have someone from, um, planning and economic development wants to come up. But, um, my understanding is that we have enough money in the regular home funds. And since we already made that commitment to the continuum to hold the ARPA funds separate for them, that's where I'm coming from.
Do we have any date when they're gonna come with their plan for that, for that money? Okay.
I was definitely gonna ask that once everybody was done. Um, but Mayor Langfelder, um, also has a question.
Appreciate you.
No, I'll give an answer, actually. Uh, the home funds are used for a broad range of programs. Home ARPA dollars, uh, that's really under the Continuum of Care's guidance, uh, per HUD. And so that's per their strategic plan, and this fits right into the strategic plan. The, uh, reason aside from that, using home ARPA dollars, is that it provides greater flexibility. And, uh, you know, part of the, uh, initiative brought up is with regards to, uh, caseworking, things of that nature. So that's why the decision of the, uh, home ARPA dollars is being utilized.
And then Josh, would you like to come up to answer Alderman Gregory's question? Of course you do.
I was hoping to avoid you until you had that plan in your hands, but, uh, sometimes it doesn't work out that way. We, there's a lot of hard, great work has been going into that. And I anticipate our steering committee meeting in, in mid-July, that we'll come out of that with a working plan that will be distributed to you all, and then a series of community conversations and things will follow at that point. In regards to, to home ARPA, uh, what the mayor said is true. So that's a, it's a special funding source, and it was just under two point four million. In some ways, the funding source is more narrow in that it's really focused on people experiencing homelessness and supportive services. And then compared to regular home, in some ways, it's a little bit broader, because, uh, instead of just being able to, to fund construction, it can also fund, um, supportive services. So when we bring the plan to you, you're gonna see massive needs. I mean, it's, it's incredibly important for us as a community, it's to be celebrated that we've got a permanent supportive housing project coming before you. This is exactly the type of progress that our community needs to make. And so with that two point four million and the flexibility that it has, when you look at the strategic plan and some of the things that we can fund with those dollars, uh, you can see that, you know, the rental subsidy along with those supportive services, uh, could help us serve a lot of people. So eight hundred thousand out of that is, um, would be a third of it, um, but this is absolutely a, a good project. Uh, if there's flexibility in other buckets, I guess I'm asking for all of it, right? If, if these funds could come from home dollars and they're, they're an appropriate cost, that would be incredible, because then that two point four million would still be available to fund what that plan is recommending.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And, and Josh, I think I, I hit this request to speak button before you finished all of what you were gonna say. So, but let me just, to be clear, you're saying that because there is flexibility with the, the home ARPA funds, it would be better for us to stick to our commitment to hold those for you after the strategic plan comes out. And I understand strategic planning processes can take time, and, and we do want a more quality report. Um, but, you know, so that we can, we can actually have a good handle on. But what you're, what you're saying is that the home ARPA funds give you more flexibility to address the needs and then the strategies that you're identifying in your plan. And home funds can obviously be used specifically for this purpose without, without any issues around, about the use of the funds. Is that correct?
As I understand it, yes. In regards to what we're hoping to accomplish, um, one of the things we all recognize, right? That, uh, for people experiencing homelessness, expanding what's available in terms of supportive services in our community is crucial. We, we've got to build capacity. Those home ARPA funds can be a big part of that. And then with the tenant-based rental assistance, other things that they can accomplish, it can also help accomplish that, that rental side and help get people into units as well. So, um, it's an incredibly.
And provide services to them while they're in there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Um, so, so we, we've had our talks and, 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 you know, I knew some of that answer. I was just asking for us to get that. You know, a couple of years ago, I promised to always bring this up, so we keep this fresh. And, and, and the reason why, you know, I made that initial call to you is because, you know, we, we, we've, uh, made a commitment to the community that we would get them some information in, in, in time, and time's a ticking. And I don't wanna run out of, you know, I don't wanna get to September and then we like, oh, we don't got it, we, we, we don't have it totally figured out or how we need to do it, and, and, and we gotta figure out something for the winter. I, I just, you know, I'm a straightforward guy, and that's, that's what I wanna, I wanna be prepared before we get there. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, Alderman Williams.
Yes, so, um, I guess this is to the mayor. When you said other programs with home, there's other, what are the other programs?
Well, there are, uh, housing initiatives, uh, you know, could be going for, uh, homeownership. Um, actually, our priority for, you know, we're not sure what the final version of the Continuum of Care report is, strategic planning. But we've made the commitment here is we have to get people off the streets. You know, that's the ones that haven't reached the first rung of the ladder, housing of supportive ladder of services. So that's where our priority is gonna be. So you can go ahead and allocate the home dollars, and just like I said before, what the ARPA funds are for is what the Continuum of Care directs us. But with our priority, what's under our control, is going towards the homeless care of those on the streets. Because you have to start there. And, uh, you know, so there's a lot of need out there, but, uh, what we don't wanna jeopardize is our ability. We want all available resources to go to those on the streets to start moving up that supportive ladder. Now, first rung is, of course, the overflow shelter that Alderman Gregory had spoke to. Next rung would be what the other, uh, agencies do, like Helping Hands and Contact Ministries, and the list goes on and on. After that's the Housing Authority, and then hopefully, uh, you get into the sustainability through rental or homeownership. So that's the rungs of the ladder, but we want as much resource as possible. And so when you're saying, oh, let's take eight hundred thousand dollars of the city's directive of home dollars, you're taking out of what we're able to direct. Now, it's pretty clear that with the ARPA funds, that has to be in conjunction with the Continuum of Care. And that's why this would be a better fit for the home ARPA dollars, because everybody's in agreement with this project for the most part. Uh, and this is a Continuum of Care initiative, so that's why we use the ARPA funds. Plus, it gives the greater flexibility with regards to, um, case management. Home dollars are really for the brick and mortar aspect, not the case management aspect of, uh, what the services are needed. Because you cannot simply put individuals that need help into housing and hope that they make it. You have to have that continuative, uh, continuum of supportive services that these home dollars can be utilized for.
Alderman Williams, are you?
So I guess my, so where I'm at with this is continuum of care, uh, casework, um, future things to do with these people and not just brick and mortar. I think the appropriate is home ARPA versus home. Only because of just what we're saying, and I think you even said it's, it's a good fit. It is one of your initiatives, so, so I don't think we should be changing, uh, uh, funding to home. I think we need to leave it as is, because that's the best fit.
I understand that. One thing I might add is that this eight hundred thousand is just for brick and mortar. So the supportive services, those will be covered through other funds. But in this particular project, that, that, those funds don't need that flexibility.
Yeah, but one thing we do know for the, for the supportive, it won't be home. Home can still be used for some of the other programs. Continuum of Care can continue on with the rest of the ARPA dollars or whatever.
Um, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, uh, Chair. And, and I think, um, Alderman Williams, I think actually that's not quite right. This is, this project here is literally just brick and mortar, which is very much what the home funds should be used for. And if, so if we take from the ARPA, which has the flexibility, I, I think, Mayor, we're actually gonna be limiting your goal, which is to get the most funds most directly where they need to be with the greatest flexibility for services. If we just use brick and mortar dollars for a brick and mortar project, we're, we're keeping that, that, that funding source intact, and, and we're keeping, we're keeping those for the intent that they, they're, they're supposed to be for. We have flexibility in ARPA. We have, we have flexibility for, as Josh mentioned, with, with case management for supportive services. Alderman McMenamin expressed concerns about transportation issues for people who will be eventually moving into these units. If we maintain the lar, the pot of money that has the most flexibility intact for when we get the continuum's plan, we'll have more funds to do that direct front-level service delivery as opposed to taking money out of that for brick and mortar. Where we, we, we actually, we just have another, we have another fund that we use specifically just for brick and mortar. So I, I feel like we actually, um, we're actually giving ourselves a better position to use just building dollars for just building. And then stick to our commitment to the continuum that, that we made as a council that those ARPA dollars, which have the flexibility of uses and applications, will be available when you bring your plan to us. And then we can, as a council, in conjunction with our Continuum of Care, allocate those funds in the way that gives us the most immediate and the most lasting impact on, again, Mayor, as you put it, the most vulnerable pop, of our population, which are the, our unhoused residents, um, and our unhoused neighbors. So I, again, I, my motion stands with the second, I, I do still move that we change the funding source, use just brick and mortar dollars for this brick and mortar project.
Madam Chair, I can't touch a button, but I.
Um, well, Alderman, um.
I support the amendment. I think, uh, the, um, using very flexible-type funds for bricks and mortar is, um, is, um, unwise. Um, we should save those more flexible-type funds for when we get a strategic plan from Continuum of Care and we see what, um, initiatives they wish to make. So I, I support the, uh, funding amendment.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, Josh, I just wanna say that you guys gotta step it up on this, on this plan. Um, it seems like we, we wait for things and it just keeps getting drawn out. I don't know who's, who's doing the plan, but I, I, I guess it's a committee or whatever. You gotta go back to that committee and say, we gotta get it done.
Yeah, you'll have it in July.
Um, because we're, like, like Alderman Gregory said, it's getting, you know, it's hot now, but the summer's, summer's gonna end here pretty a lot faster than what we want it to, and, and we're gonna be in the same situation we've been in every year since I've been on this council and probably a long time before that. So I, I, I just wanna stress, you've got to get this out.
Yes.
There's no more time. It's, you're, the, the clock's ticking, okay?
Absolutely. I understand what you're saying. And I want you to know too, that while we're developing a long-term strategic plan, we haven't stopped taking care of the needs at the moment or planning for the next season ahead as well.
And I, I appreciate that. I just, we, we gotta get things moving on this plan though. Thank you.
I feel that deeply.
Well, push it back to July, because I thought we were supposed to get it a few months ago.
The initial goal was March. I mean, so really what we've done with this, we have Homebase, who is working, working nationally to put together these plans specifically to address homelessness. And then we're working to also do an equ, an equity analysis of the system with, uh, Lathan Harris Inc. And so we got both of those, and now it's, it's really working to integrate those fully as, as the process. And then, um, having the steering committee really decide on, um, you know, five years versus three years, and also what types of outcomes are, so it's a lot of, that minutia has created a lot of good conversation. It's been important work, but it's not gone as quickly. I mean, we're in a community that hasn't done any strategic planning in twenty years. And so, you know, it, it's, it's been a hill to climb. It's been slower than I would have liked, but we are at a point to deliver it. And, you know, and I'm very pleased with the, the quality work that's been done, and, and I hope you will be too.
Okay, um, Mayor Langfelder.
Yeah, just, uh, let me be clear. The difference is the, um, your aspect of control, because the council essentially has given away eight hundred thousand dollars of their own control. So really, the gaps of service, let's be pretty direct, we've discussed this many, many times, is what do you do in the winter time? And the city stepped it up during the pandemic, prior to and after, with regards to the overflow shelter. And we can argue whether that's a, um, you know, a viable way to be, but what it did, it got people off the streets. No other agency is helping in that. So that's number one. Number two is day services. There's no day services. The library is the day services. We just heard that the challenge is there. So that's a brick and mortar project. So hopefully, somebody else or through the Continuum of Care, both those items have to be addressed. Because that's when we get the calls, and that's what's expected. Nobody should be out on the streets, we're trying to move forward, uh, with those supportive services, but you have to have day services. So we'll see what the report says. But those are, what you're essentially doing is giving eight hundred thousand dollars away from the city council's control to the Continuum of Care, because they direct the two point four million dollars. And that's per HUD. And so we're all in agreement that this is an initiative that's needed, uh, you know, services are needed. But we should never put a person in a housing, uh, situation where they don't have that supportive services. So I think we're all hopefully on the same page, but the highest priority has to be the ones on the streets. And the reason for that is that's why we didn't get funded to the level we could have, like other cities, is because that wasn't being addressed. And that's what the cities continually tried to address, but hopefully this report strategic plan really addresses those two aspects. Day center services, and then also twenty-four-seven emergency services to get people off the streets.
Yeah, that is a, certainly a part of it, how many people are on the streets. And then the other system performance measure is how long a person stays homeless. So there's, there's several different metrics that HUD looks like. And our community has not performed well historically, which is no surprise, absolutely. Um, I would say with home, our, home ARP funds, it's very much a collaborative effort, right? We, we'll have the strategic plan, which we've worked on collaboratively. You've been a part of that steering committee. Um, we will bring that, and then we'll work with OPED, right, to put together that allocation plan and then do community hearings. And then anything else will have to come through you all for approval too. So it's very much a collaboration ahead of us about how to use that funding to meet the goals that we all wanna meet.
Alderman Gregory.
Last, just so I'm understanding. So, so when we come to that time and we have to, um, and, and I think this is what this is about. So when, when it comes to time and we, we need to pay for, for a building, for our, our, um, 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 people experiencing homelessness to stay in this winter, who's paying for it? Are, are you gonna come for, you know, and say, we need a million dollars from the city to do it?
I can tell you, I won't come for a million, but.
I'm just saying. Are you gonna take it out of your money, or are you expecting us to pay it? And I don't have a problem either.
My own personal money.
Out of the, the money that you direct.
That two point four million, one of the, one of the eligible costs for that is non-congrat shelter, if the community deems that a need. So that, and, you know, so there's some bricks and mortar that could be used in that as well. Um, so there, there is, in terms of what we're doing with overflow shelter, which I would say has been, you know, a very helpful intervention, right? Even to keep that open in these summer months has been a significant step forward. Um, so, um, absolutely, right? We need, we, that's absolutely something we still have to address.
Answer me this one question. I forget. I'm getting a little older. How much did we, how much did it cost for our winter warming shelter for the last deal that we had?
The last ordinance, you can correct me, I believe it was four hundred and seventy-five thousand for that twelve-month period.
Okay. So we would do, all right, thank you.
So I heard there is an amendment on the floor. Do I have a second for that?
Second, thirty-second.
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
We're still discussing.
Oh, did, you just pressed the button while I was talking. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so, so I guess it's on me, um, as far as knowing the difference between home ARPA and home. But I did hear other programs, uh, and, and, and we tend to, you know, with these home dollars, think of only one continuum of care and no other responsibilities that we have, which may or may not be true. Uh, I, I feel like we're getting the information late, so we're gonna approve this, this way with this type of funding. Then he's gonna come and tell us what, what, what his plan says. And, and this may not be the smartest way to, to, to fund this. So this, this is where I, where my hesitancy is on, uh, changing it. You know, um, he's not in disagreement with it, with it reading as it reads. Uh, perhaps he could report, and then we maybe change the funding source. I don't know. But I, I don't know if these things are possible, because I don't know enough about, uh, um, home in particular funds, uh, uh, Mayor. But when you said other programs, I started thinking about other needs, you know, uh, dealing with housing in particular. And, um, I know how we are with Continuum of Care, like they're the only ones that can do it in Springfield, blah, blah, blah. So I, I'll leave it at that, and, and, and we'll just live with, with, whatever the council's, uh, pleasure, you know?
Did you wanna ask Corporation Council, when you said you don't know how that, if you're able to do that?
Uh, no, we were okay.
Okay. So now we're at the all-in-favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Now, do we come back?
To.
Yeah.
I guess.
Motion for consent is amended.
Go ahead.
Motion for consent is amended.
Second.
To debate.
To debate.
Debate. They're gonna give me another week to.
Yeah, motion to debate is amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two eighty-five, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Enos Park Development LLC for purchase of land and all improvements for the seventy-three parcels of property located in Enos Park and listed on Exhibit A for an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand, sixty-one dollars.
Move to debate.
Second. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, I'm concerned about the city buying seventy-three parcels of land. And we, we seem to have a, uh, we buy the property, it comes off the property tax rolls, and, uh, then we are responsible for cutting it, which we, we don't necessarily do the best job is, uh, cutting our own lots. Um, and I just am very concerned. I think we need to stay out of the property business and, and, and be more, you know, I would say if we do this, we need to get them up, up on the auction block as soon as possible, because we've got, how many, how many? we need to get them up, up on the auction block as soon as possible, because we've got, how many, how many lots will that leave the city? Does anybody know?
Director Bottom.
Can you get me the numbers for next?
You don't want those numbers. You don't want them, dog.
Uh, Alderman Hanauer, are you, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I, I'm trying to understand more about the, the proposal here, you know, uh, this is a part of Ward Three, a, a smaller part. Most of it is in Ward Five. Uh, but what I would say, uh, um, anything that would move, uh, the projects in that area forward, I'm for. Uh, especially when it comes to improving. So mayor, if we're trying to, um, buy back these properties, because we as a city are going to do things to make them better. I mean, I've had some conversation. I understand the, you know, the comprehensive plan calls for the commercialization of, uh, Ninth Street in particular, which is that part of Ward Three, which I would love to see, you know, and then my North Eighth area. But I, I'm kind of, uh, with the Ward Ten Alderman. I still want to understand the history of it and is it making sense, uh, what we're doing? And, and by this just going to debate for next week, that's going to give me time to, 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 to get this together, you know? So I just wanted to, to weigh in on that as Alderman who has a piece of the property, you know?
Yes, um, Alderman Gregory, hold on one second, Michelle. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so, so I, I just, and I thank you for answering our questions and talking with us. So I, I just want to make it clear. I, I, I find value in a community that, that is engaged and working and, and wants to develop it. I, 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 I look for ways like that in, in my own community. That's why I was interested in, um, the history of, of this, of this thing, of this deal. And, you know, I do have my concerns about us getting more lots. Um, and if this does pass, you know, I, I will be looking next year to add a little more money to Public Works grass cutting crew, because, you know, that's sending three more lots that we got to take care of, um, on top of, you know, all the ones in our ward. And, and I, and I think, um, those are the things that make them appealing to be sold as well. And I know you guys have done some work, um, in that area. So those are just my comments, but I, I just wanted, on the overall thing that you guys were doing in that, um, community, it was not a bad thing. It's, it's not a, um, uh, it's something that, that I really want to look at and, and try to take to, um, some areas that ask questions on how, uh, Enos Park was getting that done. So I appreciate you answering those questions yesterday. Thank you.
And we'll be honored to share that with you as, as we get completed. Michelle, can you give just a little bit of background for my other colleagues too? They had questions about what was the, the 10-year plan?
Sure, ab- absolutely. And, you know, Alderman Hanauer, I certainly, uh, understand your concern about the city being in the, the land banking business. But like it or not, I, I think it's safe to say the city already is. I, I certainly don't want to speak for Director Bottom, but my understanding is the city currently owns somewhere around 200 vacant lots already. So, you know, the city's already very familiar with the, the work that goes into maintaining those. What I will tell you is I think a little bit different in this situation, the city actually first approached us probably about five years ago now with this idea of taking over the land bank, one of the main reasons being the issue of the taxes. Even though we're a nonprofit, um, a lot of people don't realize nonprofits don't pay taxes on their headquarters, but everything else is still subject to taxes. So that's a huge burden for us in addition to, you know, the insurance and the maintenance and, and all of that. And, and we're all volunteers. You know, we have no regular source of income. We have no staff. So that is a lot to do. We, we don't have a public works department, right? So it, it's a lot for us to take on. Um, but five years ago, when we first had the conversation, we actually did not want our lots to become part of the city's existing land bank, because as you're probably aware, there's an existing RFP program where for $500, you can buy an adjacent property, you know, expand your yard, plant flowers. For Enos Park, that is exactly what we don't want. And we've actually upset a lot of our board members even and neighbors over the years by refusing to sell them adjacent lots. Um, we need to raise our property tax values. We need to raise our tax base. We are a TIF district. We need to raise the equalized assessed value in our TIF district. And we're not going to get that if people just have bigger yards and plant flowers. We need infill new construction and that's what our master plan calls for. As Alderman, uh, Williams referenced, you know, Ninth Street needs to be a commercial corridor. We've done a lot of demolitions on Ninth Street, because we don't feel that residential is appropriate there any longer and most of it is very distressed at this point. The other parts of the neighborhood would be very appropriate for residential construction. And so when this issue came up again about six months ago, the mayor had suggested using, um, CDBG funds. Community Development Block Grant requires you to have a plan, an, an active plan for the properties, not to just hold them indefinitely. And we worked with our attorney and Corporation Council Zerkel to put some language in place that specifies that these lots are for infill new construction. So again, even though they would become part of the city's existing land bank, they essentially would not follow the same protocol. Um, we have a master plan. We have design standards. We've been actively recruiting, you know, potential developers all along. And, and quite frankly, we would continue to do that, even if the city owned the properties, it's only in our best interest to continue to have those conversations and try to entice development in the neighborhood. Um, you know, everybody talks about the need for affordable workforce housing. We're right in the medical district in between the two hospitals, SIU School of Medicine with the med students. We have very little appropriate rental housing in our neighborhood and we would love to see some great multifamily development. Again, we're actively in discussions with a couple of different developers at this point. Um, we'd love to see some new single-family homes filling in these, you know, these missing teeth, as they call it, these gaps in the historic fabric of our neighborhood. So it would absolutely be our, our intention and our goal to continue to work with the city to try to get new construction going as quickly as possible, rather than just, you know, selling off these lots as quickly and as cheaply as possible for people to, to have bigger yards. That's, that's not our goal at all and that's not the goal of our master plan.
Thank you, Michelle. Alderman Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and Ms. Obie, thank you for that explanation. I think it's clear that the city and the association have the mutual interest. We want to see Enos Park, uh, be extremely successful. There's so much potential there. There always has been. I, I feel like this is the, all the stars are aligning. And just, just, I guess it's really, it's more of a statement. My understanding is, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that the city, through the tax increment financing program, assisted Enos Park in acquiring the, these properties originally. And, and the problem that's been created is, as you described a heck of a lot better than I'm probably going to summarize here, is that, uh, it's a nonprofit organization. There's been real estate taxes, uh, that are due. This will essentially make everything right. Put us, meaning the city and the association, in a stronger position to move forward economic development and get things happening as fast as possible. As we all know, with ta- tax increment financing, it is so important to get things moving. The faster development and redevelopment occurs, the faster real estate tax dollars are generated and the more vibrant an area is. And this seems to be, at least in, in my reading of the situation, consistent with the plan, consistent with, uh, some sound economic development. It's unfortunate we got to the position that's in, this is going to make it right so that we can move forward.
I, I agree. That's a, a great summary of the current situation. Um, and yes, we're essentially looking to wipe the slate clean. You know, I want to be clear, no, nobody's walking away with a dollar from this purchase agreement. It simply wipes the slate clean of any outstanding debts. You know, the title company would take care of all that at closing. So nobody is making any money on this transaction, but the properties would then, um, become under the control of the city, which is not subject to taxes. And again, you have a, a public works department, sorry Nate, but, um, you know, the city, I think, is certainly in a much better position to maintain these properties than, than we are with a handful of dedicated volunteers. So going forward, I think it's the best, as you said, best opportunity for economic development.
And I would just like to e- echo that I have definitely been a net at a barbecue, trying to move forward with some of the developers that have been coming over into Enos Park. So we're constantly in conversations, but as you all know, that takes time with planning. It's just not something happening overnight. And some of you all are familiar with those developers that are trying to build some workforce housing with the medical district in between both hospitals. So, um, Alderman Gregory.
So my final comment, I just, and, and my colleague said something, so I just, I just want clarification. So we bought these lots for Enos Park years ago?
It's a combination. Many of them were purchased using TIF financing. Some of them were donated to us.
So any, so if there's any in this 73 that we bought with TIF from, I would assume the county, and now we're buying them back?
Good gig, huh?
He is digging. Let me help you too, Michelle. Let me help you too. So there's some, some properties when I even first moved over into Enos Park. Even some of those properties were purchased and we, I've brought in people into Enos Park and they've purchased those properties and was able to, uh, renovate them and now they live in them. But some of the properties were so bad, I saved my house that was two days away from demolition. But some of them, they just couldn't be saved. So we have not been able to have the, a developer come in and actually build on it for over five or six years now. And I was at the table at one point in time with the board when we were in, you know, conversations about this. There's a big, large gap that some of the developers can't fill. And now it's just kind of the can has been kicked down the road. But I strongly believe that we're in the right place right now to continue moving forward, knowing that we're talking to developers.
I, I, my, my only question was is that we, are we buying some of these lots twice? Are we expending? What, what fund is this coming out of? Tax increment financing, um, twice on, on some of the same?
No, it's coming out of CDBG funds, not, uh, the TIF funds.
Oh, I apologize. There wasn't nothing, um, listed as a funding source. So I, I, still the fact remains, are we, are we, is some of these lots have we paid for before?
TIF money has been utilized for some of these properties, yes.
Thank you.
That is correct.
I appreciate it.
Um, Alderman Williams.
So, so is there any debt or do we owe, if we get these properties back, are we getting them with something old?
No, this purchase price would satisfy everything. So the city would, again, it would, it would just wipe the slate clean and start over at that.
I heard you say nobody makes anything, which, which I understand, but I just want to make sure that there was no debt involved. Because some people can look at this and see it as if, oh, we gave TIF to get it and now we're, we're paying to get it back. I mean, you know, uh, and I don't think there's a way to separate out what's been donated versus what was TIF and all those types of things though. That, that's it. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Chair, I'd like to talk when it was.
I'll let Alderman McMenon go first.
Okay, I, I, you want to let?
That's fine. Yeah, let him go first.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is a good, uh, proposal. Basically, we're buying them back, but I think what we're really doing is buying back the debt that's associated with these lots, uh, which is causing the, the, uh, Enos Park Development LLC to bleed, because they're having to pay all these real estate taxes on these lots that, uh, can't be sold as fast as we'd all like them to be sold to the right, um, new owners. So, uh, plus there's the maintenance costs and the insurance costs that are, that are mounting, which are just kind of like bearing, um, the, the Enos Park Development LLC. So I think this is a good approach for going forward. And, um, we ought to, uh, vote yes to this, uh, next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And I just have a question, um, this one, there's no funding source for the purchase in the ordinance. So can we have that clarified?
Yes, I said it, it would be coming out of the CDBG funds.
Okay, can we just make sure that's updated in the ordinance fact sheet for next week? Cause, um, I'm not.
I understand. I understand.
Thank you.
Could you make sure that's in notation? Are there any more discussion? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I, the ayes have it.
2022, 286, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount not to exceed $250,000 for the exterior rehabilitation program, utilizing the Far East Tax Increment Finance Funds for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
I make a motion that we approve or for consent.
Well, Alderman Gregory has an amendment he wants to add.
Oh, is that?
Right?
Yes. So, um, with this program, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So with this program, I would just like to introduce an amendment. It is for the exterior rehabilitation program, and I would like for it to include the interior as well. I do know there are some expenses on the interior that are covered under TIF and I would like to expand it to, to do that.
Second.
Thank you.
I, I made the motion. I thought I could, but I made a motion. I didn't think I could. You should have said.
All those in favor?
Oh, uh, sorry.
You got discuss, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And if I could just, Alderman Gregory, can you just kind of explain a little bit more what that, what that would entail?
Uh, I would, I would have, uh, the expert.
Or, or have an expert.
Hey, Robbie.
Robbie. So, so there are, um, TIF eligible expenses that, uh, would suffice for interior rehabilitation as well. Historically, the city of Springfield did have a program, uh, that included, uh, TIF eligible expenses that were for interior rehabilitation for homeowners as well. So some of those would include, you know, flooring, uh, HVAC. Those are TIF eligible expenses. So we do receive a lot of those, uh, you know, issues from our homeowners, you know, we want to be able to address those as well. So expanding the scope.
If you could, um, but I, I would like a list of the exterior and interior projects that would be eligible. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with this, Alderman Gregory at all. I'd just like to know a little bit more about exactly what kind of projects we would be funding with these.
I would like that list as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Robbie, if you can get that to us by next week, it'd be helpful too.
Absolutely.
Um, before we vote. And then, um, piggybacking off of Alderwoman Conley, I would like us to take a look at the barriers that some of, um, our constituents are coming up against when they're, uh, going out to ask for funds so that they can do this work and get the reimbursement. We're having some roadblocks and some of, at least my neighbors have called me to say, how can we fix this if I can't get approved for it to, so that I can get reimbursed? Nine times out of 10, most of the banks will say yes to it, because they know it's some type of reimbursement coming back. But we have that barrier of people not having good credit, not making enough money to ask for. So I want to try to figure out a way, how can we work that out too?
Absolutely. We're, we're working on that as well, you know, introducing, you know, we understand the match has been an impediment for a lot of our individuals, you know, especially in those LMI areas. So working out details and, you know, looking at how we can make it more accessible as well as equitably accessible for our individuals as well. So.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep hammering you two to see how we get to that, to execute in that solution. Alderman Gregory.
So I, you know, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Alderwoman. Um, I, I know the EDC did, did approve a housing program. Um, housing adjustments to these TIF projects. I know Robbie has worked on, um, some different entities and stuff. And, and, and quite honestly, I'm going to talk with him as well. And, and I'm sure we all who, who represent TIF districts, um, to really make sure it's, it's, uh, working for the people. Cause I do agree with you. We, we need to do that. And he's been working a long time at that, a, 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 actually putting together some, some things for that. So I thank you for his hard work. And I think it's going to be, you know, with these programs, um, as well as yours, you know, opening up for interior stuff like that, is really going to, um, help us get the ball moving.
Thank you. Um, I do not see any further discussion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Were we just voting on the amendment?
Yeah, that was the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. As amended.
As amended for?
Consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Yes. Wait, what you said? That would be me to say. I'm looking for a motion as amended.
So I would move to, um, put this on consent as amended.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, and the ayes have it.
2022, 287, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount not to exceed $100,000 for the Enos Park Exterior Rehabilitation Program, utilizing Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Finance Funds for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
I would like to introduce an amendment to this one as well, if you would have it for interior improvements as well, your SHS TIF.
Yes, I will.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, do I need another motion?
Now it's amended.
Now it's amended.
For the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
For the consent agenda.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
2022, 288, an ordinance authorizing additional spending authority in the amount of $40,000 for a total amount not to exceed $120,000 for the Office of Human Resources, HSHS Medical Group, to administer drug and alcohol testing for potential new hires for the current employees from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2022.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Madam Chair, can I do a shout out for Tony and our audio visual team? It's his birthday tonight. Happy birthday, Tony.
Happy birthday, Tony. And Tony from Chicago, we always say, we always say, now I can't sing, but happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Point it, Roy.
Happy birthday. You looking good for 21.
And a happy belated birthday to Alderwoman Conley, whose birthday was yesterday.
Yes, yesterday.
Happy birthday.
Tony, you missed me by one day. We, we could have been hanging with, you could have been hanging with a cool kid. Tony, you missed me by one day. We, we could have been hanging with, you could have been hanging with a cool kid.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Do we have, and somebody took me off, uh we have any new business, well, unfinished business, Mayor Langfelder?
Yeah, I'd like uh Scott Dolph, he'd come up and give a, an update on the J.C.'s activities and any Fourth of July activities that he's aware of. That'd be helpful. There's a lot going on.
That was a part of my new business.
Yeah, there definitely is a uh lot going on with the Capital C Celebration uh coming back. Uh they'll kick off tomorrow night uh with the eleven amp, uh or excuse me, Thurston had with the eleven amp and fireworks. Um and then uh they'll do History Comes Alive on Friday in, in coordination with that. Saturday uh is the parade, uh some additional fireworks throughout town, uh family activities downtown as well. Uh you should check out the Springfield J.C.'s website. Uh they also have a Capital C Celebration event on Facebook as well. Uh their webpage, you can check that out, or of course, go to visit SpringfieldIllinois.com. We have all the information on there as well. Uh it'll proceed through Sunday and um and then wrap up on Monday. So good to have the Capital C Celebration back. Uh it's been, I believe, four years, so.
Yes, and also too, I wanted to mention to my older sister, D'Scenzo, you should bring your dog because I'm doing a dog pageant on Saturday.
She's not well behaved. She's very spoiled.
Um Alderwoman D'Scenzo?
Um yes, two issues I want to bring up. Um we already have fireworks blasting off in all the neighborhoods, um at least around where I live. And I'm already getting complaints about it. I'm watching uh another dog right now who doesn't like fireworks. Kind, kind of an issue. We're starting early every year, earlier and earlier and earlier every year. We start with the neighborhood fireworks. Um so people get tired of it, uh people with PTSD get tired of it, I get tired of it. Not the fireworks, the complaints. And then second, I had a lot of complaints that there was fundraising going on in the medians of Wabash and Veterans Parkway over the last several days.
I was.
Yep, um I actually called the chief yesterday, and he sent someone out, but come on. We can't be having fundraising on the medians when we're trying to prevent panhandlers from being on the medians. A little bit of a mixed message there, and um I, we have to be consistent. And if, if fundraising is being allowed on the medians, then we should not be having a discussion at all about panhandlers on medians. Not cool. That's all I have.
Nobody on the medians.
No, exactly.
I saw them too. That was.
Thank you. Uh Alderman Gregory?
No, I, I just want to, I, I do agree with that, and I believe it was out west on a busy, busy street like that.
It was. Fashion veterans.
It's very dangerous, so I, I definitely agree with that, um Alderwoman. Um I, I, I just want to say, you know, it, it, I thank our police department, you know, he's, he's, uh Chief Scarlett has done a great job. He was out in our community that we had um two people lost in our community, and you know, I know I can't save everything, but I, I, I take it a little hard every, you know, when, when we have this and when we are coming to council and I, you know, I, I just want to compliment, you know, Chief Scarlett and his team. They were out today, and you know, we met on, on some problem spots and, and along with Public Works and um CWLP really just tried to put together some game plans to try to make certain problem areas a little better. So I, you know, I compliment the team. I know they went out um and, and, and really um reassure some of the neighbors um that they're here for them, and, and I appreciate that. And I wasn't there, and I'm probably never going to be there and be running around, but I do appreciate y'all, you know, and, and, and I mean that, and uh, you know, it's a, it's a crazy time in our world, man, and, and um, you know, so I appreciate y'all. Keep at it. All right.
Madam Chair, can I?
You sure can.
Thank you. Uh appreciate that sentiment, obviously. Um you know, we're here for the community, and uh we're here for the protection of our citizens, and uh we'll continue to work together with each one of you as far as uh what we can do, uh not only in the aftermath of, of violent situations, but also with the panhandling situation. And, and if I could just touch on that real quick, just because somebody's wearing a, a green vest and holds a sign and a tube that looks like they're fundraising doesn't mean that they're legit fundraisers, and I made this comment on the radio. People are trying to scam the citizens of this community any way they can, and uh me as the individual who removed them from Wabash and Veterans, I can tell you that in and of itself was just another example of a scam. So uh public service announcement to the citizens of Springfield, there are legitimate ways to go about donating to those that need the services, and there are people that need them. And I would encourage everyone to use those methods versus uh giving money to anyone on the median or curb. Thank you.
So those were panhandlers disguised as fundraisers?
Call them whatever you want. That's correct.
They're getting creative.
Yeah, that, that was actually the call. I, I called you yesterday about exactly those people. I driven past them, and I apologize, you, I was back at work when you called me back, so.
I, I had the privilege of speaking with three of you all about that, and uh.
Sorry.
So we took care of it.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say while you're up here, Chief, um that Enos Park Neighborhood Association and myself would like to thank you and the Police Department for coming in full force just to knock on the neighbors' doors last week and to also reassure them about the pop-up parties and just letting them know who their neighborhood police officer was. There were people who thought somebody was in trouble, and we were just canvassing the area for something bad, and we changed that mindset by saying, no, we're just here to say hi to you and give us, give your information out and receive yours back. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and like to continue seeing that throughout the city because it builds a strong relationship with our neighborhood associations and just our neighbors to let them know that we hear you, we see you, and we're listening for your concerns.
I appreciate that, and, and to my point earlier, it's about working together with the community. It's about building that trust in those community walks like we did in Enos Park, and we're out fifteen hundred block of Cook today and have some other ones scheduled uh all summer long. Um you know, again, that's what we're all about. Uh policing is, is more than just uh traditional policing. We've got to be out there, and we've got to engage, and that's what we'll do.
Thank you. Mayor Langfelder?
Yeah, Chief, uh couple questions on the people being in the medians. Um isn't it against city code that an individual cannot encroach traffic?
Yeah, there are, and don't quote me on this, but there are two city ordinances uh that we, that are on the books that uh essentially say you can't go from the median into the roadway to approach the traffic. That's correct.
And if someone's on the median, uh wouldn't they have to encroach traffic?
That's the only way, in my opinion, that you could get out there, yes.
So uh for the council members, there's a ordinance held in committee, and we should bring it out and vote on it next week because it's purely a safety issue. I don't care who's on the median. It's one of us. If it's anybody, nobody should be allowed on the medians. That's my own personal opinion. It's a safety factor. It's always been a safety factor. And uh if everybody feels the same way, we should pull the ordinance out of committee, vote on it once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, wasn't we wait, waiting on some clarification from Corporation Council, or has that been done? I think he has.
That's my, that's my opinion, and uh he has his opinion. He has a legal opinion. ACLU has an opinion. We all have an opinion, and uh, you know, God forbid someone gets hit. But we have it on the books. You cannot encroach traffic. And if someone's on the median and someone's driving by, they're going to have to encroach traffic. It's common sense. So you know, that's my opinion that we should pull it out and vote on it once and for all because uh, you know, there's no mistreatment. The, we put the police in a very difficult position when we uh try to have them legislate this themselves. They need the clarity, and the clarity is, you cannot encroach traffic. Being on the median is clearly in the middle of traffic.
Thank you for the clarification. Um Alderman Donnelly?
Yeah, I, I, just to build upon that, Mayor, I agree with you wholeheartedly, uh but Alder, Alderwoman uh or Madam Chair, you were, you're correct. My understanding was you were holding it, and but if we're going to move it forward, and I'm in favor of that, wholeheartedly, um I just want to be extremely clear here for a lot of reasons. This isn't about panhandling. The mayor is absolutely correct. The ordinance that has been uh introduced, that's been sitting in committee, is all about safety. That's it. I don't care if someone feels like walking in uh walk at the forty-five mile an hour road on Veterans Parkway and uh Wabash, standing in the median for, just because they want to get a suntan. It's, it should not be allowed, uh whether, or whether they're standing there with their hand out. It just shouldn't be allowed. It's not safe. Someone is going to get hurt. I witnessed that as well, uh and it was, it was, it was uh quite disturbing, and uh I'm glad you got out there, Chief, and addressed it. Um and uh Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I will, I will ask, I think the clerk has to read the ordinance first, but I'll make the motion to put it on debate for next week.
Second. Third.
Twenty twenty-two, one sixty-three. An ordinance submitting Chapter eighty, Section eighty point zero eight A B C and Section eighty-two point zero two A one of the nineteen eighty-eight City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to pedestrians on roadways.
Um I do see discussion. Alderman Donnelly, you just spoke. Are you done?
I am, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, um Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, and, and I've seen, I've seen people out there just holding uh advertising signs in the middle of, you know, middle of the road for businesses and that. It's no different than that. It's not just about the money deal. It's just, they shouldn't be out there, so. And, and uh Chief, I, I appreciate you going out there. I, I think, you know, we get hit with our, our um, our constituents of when they see that. And I think that we, we sent people out earlier. Um these people, the, they seem like they, they'll go away for a minute, and then they'll come right back, you know, or somebody else will come back, so they can say, well, it wasn't me, you know. And so uh the, the public has to understand, we do our best, but you know, the police, that, you guys are awful busy. And uh, and so I appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion for consent.
So we have a mo- no, we got, we have a motion for debate in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sorry.
All the ayes have it. Is there any citizen request to address committee? Great. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak?
Alice Ramey has signed up.
She left.
She left. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, I didn't have to use my gavel today.
You overused it last time.